That we're late in arriving, we were, our closed session went a little bit over. Just to give you an update, all of us got sworn in prior to this. There was, so we were able to do the closed session. I'll talk about the formal swearing in when we get there, but we, there's nothing to report out of closed session and we will be going back into closed session. So with that, we can do the roll call.
Good evening. Board member Deborah Vincent?
Present.
Board member Gary Hack?
Present.
Board member Crystal Sawyer-White?
Present.
Board vice president Walter Rulig?
Present.
Board president Diane Gibson-Grey?
Here. Okay, let's do the flag slip. Everybody stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, this is where I have to explain the ceremonial oath of office. I came in yesterday to get sworn in.
As I did.
As Gary did. And then Crystal, and I didn't know this before 5:21 or I would have been here earlier, you were sworn in at 6 o'clock by supervisor Frederick Glover. And since this is my third term, your second time, and your family's already left, we're going to forego the formal oath of office. We've already done them. Okay, so with that, we will move.
Legal.
We're legal. So that, we will go to approval of the minutes for November 9th, and only three of us can vote. Board member Vincent, myself, and board member Rulig. So is there a motion to approve? Actually, we're, we're there for all, both of them. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Sorry.
Excuse me, one minute. There's a slight revision on the 16th. I had, I neglected to have Deborah as nominating Yolanda Mendrick to the CSBA delegate. I had Alonso's name, so I made that correction.
Correct. Thank you. So it would be a motion with a correction as indicated by Ms. Leachey.
Motion.
A motion too? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those abstaining?
Abstain.
Crystal?
Abstain.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to superintendent reports.
Yeah, just want to formally welcome our newest board members, Crystal Sawyer-White and Gary Hack. Congratulations, and we look forward to working with you. I know we've gotten a lot of work done in the last year despite having a number of challenges, as many districts did throughout the state of California, but just looking forward to the work that we will do together. And then I want to say that it's our last meeting before holiday break, so I want to wish the board and our staff, community members, all a restful and relaxing holiday.
And I'm sure you meant to welcome me back for a third term.
I am so sorry. Ms. Diane Gibson-Grey?
Right.
It was so seamless.
Yes.
Didn't even notice you were gone.
I need a cookie for that one.
I know.
So now we go to individuals to address the board regarding items not on the agenda. It's very difficult to see, but basically it's three minutes. At the end of three minutes, I will stop the conversation. To be fair to everybody, I apply that evenly. We do the public ones first, so, and I don't know what order these should be in. I was kind of scrambling when I came in because we're late. So if you're not here yet, I'll try one more time before we close the public session. Anna Bolden?
Bolden.
Thank you. Sorry about that. You say it way better than I do. You want to come up?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
I need somebody who speaks Spanish, who can translate.
We don't have a translator here this evening.
Well, then let me try to explain myself.
We will translate it for the board members, so they will have it.
My kids are at school, at Jack London School, and they're attending a program that is math after school. And we heard that you're going to cut the program. We want to know what's going on here, because on the time that they've been there, they did a huge progress on that. And then my concern is, why are you cutting that program? I want to know what's going on here. I don't know. I have the reports. I have like three kids. My friends are here too, because we all take our kids to that program, and we want to know if there's some way that we can keep that program.
Okay, and another thing I should explain, public comments, we listen to you. You're not on the agenda.
I know. You're not going to answer to me.
You're not going to answer to questions. But we will demand you to do this.
Do you need this, this report?
If you'd like to leave it with Mr. Parker.
Do you need this?
And by the way, you did an excellent job.
Thank you.
And if you do need translations in the future, you just let us know ahead of time.
No, I can understand, but sometimes when I try to explain myself, it's kind of hard. But I'm like, I'm trying, I'm trying my best.
You did great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Julie Young. You know the rules.
I know. Good evening, board members. I just wanted to take a few minutes to talk about the Math Intensive Program that is being run over at Jack London Elementary School. The program has been going on since the first day of school with over 80 students enrolled. During that time, I only saw Fernando Navarro and Alonso Terry from the school board visit the program to see how things were going. I have not seen anyone else from the district come around to check it out, but Adam Clark from the district has decided that Math Intensive is not worth keeping around as a program that will help kids with their math skills. How can you make that decision without even checking it out? What I'm hearing is that there isn't any funding available to keep the program going. Okay, so math scores are at an all-time low, and our schools are based on these scores, and this program would help raise these scores, but we don't have the money for it. When I looked at the LCAP funding earlier this year, $70,000 was budgeted to help improve Algebra I scores. That is really a low amount of money for the amount of work that needs to be done in our schools with math. I really did not realize how bad math is for some of these kids. Most of the kids that came to us scored one to two grade levels below their current grade level. They do not know how to add or subtract large numbers, let alone single-digit numbers. And these students are being moved on. They just continue to teach on their schedule, even though they know that some students have not mastered these skills. This is not the teachers' fault. They have requirements that they need to meet, and so they do not have the time to give extra help to those that need it. Now the kids are getting confused because they are teaching multiplication and division simultaneously. Let me give you an example. There are 42 students and seven buses. How many students got on each bus? Now, the answer probably just popped into your head because you know your multiplication facts. Is that true? Maybe? Okay. Unfortunately for the kids, they are required to draw a picture and tally-mark each bus to figure out how many kids are in each bus. The frustration is real when they lose track of what number they are on and end up with five kids in one bus, seven in another, and six in another. Please consider this program to help these kids in math, but also help our district by raising our test scores. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, no extended comment, but just a few words.
Gary.
Since I really can't comment, I'll have to be extremely brief, but I have been there at least a couple of times in the past and do have questions and concerns about program, but that might be a future agenda item.
I can't get the L in right. Hernandez, Ms. Hernandez.
Maricela Hernandez.
Maricela, yes.
She's kind of nervous because she thought that somebody speak Spanish.
So you can transfer, translate for her if you want. You did a great job.
I can try.
If you don't mind. I'm sorry. I'm just volunteering you.
Don't worry, I'm just. I'm just.
So actually, Stephanie can also try.
Okay.
Oh, Stephanie.
Un poquito, pero en inglés, porque mi acento es muy mal.
Okay.
Buenas noches. Es el mismo programa de matemáticas de la Jack London, y pues queremos que se siga porque los niños ya han progresado.
Good evening. There's a program at Los, at Jack London Elementary. It helps children with their mathematics.
Ah, y pues sí nos gustaría que siguieran con el programa, porque sí les beneficia a los niños.
She wants to continue the program. It's beneficial to the students.
Y aquí tengo el reporte de lo que progresaron, pues que aprendieron en este corto tiempo.
She has a progress report, how her students are doing in the program in just a short time.
Okay.
Bien?
Thank you.
Bueno.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you. Elaine Moore. And you're speaking as a community member, not as staff person.
Correct.
Good evening. Tonight, I speak as a citizen of Antioch. I want to welcome the new board members. I wish you well, and my hope is that you lead this district successfully and fairly. I also look forward to the outcome of the 2018 school board elections. Not an easy road ahead of you, and I appreciate that you are willing to serve. Like most people that take the time to vote, it is because I want my voice heard. I realized that the outcome of this past election had to be certified before new members could assume their roles, and was looking forward to new members being sworn in immediately. Imagine my shock when I found out via a news article that it was decided to postpone the swearing in of new board members. Your role, it seems to me, is to vote on items brought before the board, not to use that role to postpone who can and cannot vote if they are legally allowed to assume the role. It is the collective role of the voters to decide who does the voting, and the citizens of Antioch made our voices clear. What was done may have been legal, but it was not right. I'm not sure how either of the two new board members would have voted on the Rocketship Chartership, Charter School vote. Perhaps the vote would have remained the same. We'll never know. To make matters worse, financial resources were wasted by paying for attorney advice regarding the Rocketship Charter School, only to cast that advice aside. This advice was not given once, only once, in the written report, not twice, but times when it was strongly recommended that Rocketship be provisionally accepted, if at all. As an Antioch resident, I expect this board to lead by example, to heed the warning of attorney advice paid for in part by my tax dollars, and it is my hope that all of you do so for the remainder of your terms. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Gerald Lansey?
Good evening, everyone. It's good to be up here to be able to give my voice. I have two kids that go to Dallas Ranch Middle School, and I was asked to come and speak for a few moments by one of the teachers there, Mr. Dave. Out there is a program there that helps the children to be able to cope with situations at school. And it is where they bring the parents and the children together, because I'm pretty sure all of us then raised children, and when they come home with a problem, you hear their side of the problem, but you know, there's always a lot more involved than what it is. And with the program that, that they have at Dallas Ranch Middle School is where they bring the children and the parents together, which is, in my opinion, very good, because so many parents, you know, they send their kids to school, things happen, and the parents don't take the time to go to the school. You know, they don't care if their kids get suspended or anything, but I don't want to blame everything on the parents, because a lot of parents work. But I think there need to be more schools that implement with this program, because for my kids, and for me to be able to come down to the school, sit down not only with the principal or the vice principal and with Mr. Dave here, but also with the other parents that's involved in the situation. And my kids, they get a chance to voice what happened at the school. The other kids get a chance to voice at the school, and the parents get a chance for their input. And for me, I think this is a great program that, you know, I think more schools need to try to implement, because it brings everybody together. It's not one side or the other. So on tonight, I just wanted to come in and weigh my voice, you know, because school district, I know, is doing as much as they can, but there are all little things that could be implemented that would go so far as to help not only the teachers, but the students and the parents at the school. So I just wanted to come in and just voice my opinion. Thank you so much for hearing me.
And the name of the program is?
Restorative Practices.
Restorative Practices.
I knew it, but I.
Yeah, Restorative Practices.
You came to our Rotary group, so I knew that.
That part went blank.
I just wanted to make sure we got it on record.
All right.
Thank you very much. Roberto Gomez?
Yes.
Melissa Stevenson? Maxine Larry? With the cute kids.
Thank you. Sorry, I didn't have chow here tonight.
That's okay.
But good evening, everyone. I just wanted to come, make my voice heard. I'm speaking in regards to my kid Kamari. He attends Jack London Elementary School, and he attends the Math Intensive Program. And we wanted to talk about the program being cut. The program has helped Kamari be more confident than he's ever been before. When he first started the program, he was working on addition and subtraction, and it took him about 10 minutes to do a page of addition, and that was in September. Now he's doing the addition in two minutes, in almost less than two minutes, a whole page, and also the subtraction. He's doing that in less than three minutes. He also has learned multiplication, fractions. He's also learning, tell some of the other things that you're learning.
I'm learning how to tell time. I'm also learning how to tell the temperature. And that's all I can remember.
He's learned how to write much neater. I just feel right now, he was not at the level that he needed to be at, and within three months, he has passed up his great level. He's doing very well. He's more confident than he's ever been before in math. He's excited every day about going to the math program. Okay, that's nice people. He's excited every day about going to the math program. There has not been a day where he's not wanted to go to the math program. He doesn't want me to even pick him up early, because he's excited about moving from level to level. And me, as an African-American woman, and him, as an African-American young man growing up in this society, I'm very happy that he's excited about his learning, that he's excited to succeed and have a challenge. A lot of times, he would be bored in class. He didn't want to do his homework when he came home. But this is our first time this year being excited about learning and going from level to level. So at this time, I'm very saddened that the program is going to be cut. That's right. I'm really sad that the program is going to be cut, because he is actually growing faster than he has since kindergarten, first grade, in first grade. So hopefully, you guys will take into consideration in keeping this program. It also has kept him from the games and different things that's going on. Those three hours have played a major part in him continuing his education.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you to the quiet one. Raymond O'Donlon? O'Donlon?
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Raymond O'Donlamy. I'm a 21-year resident of Antioch. I'm also with the East County NAACP. I would like to congratulate the two new board members, new trustees for the school district, and the newly re-elected trustee to the board, as well as the newly appointed superintendent, or recently appointed superintendent. With a new board and a new superintendent, it's an opportunity for the district to reassess itself and figure out how to increase the public's confidence in the district as a whole. It's an opportunity to reset. We congratulate all of you, and look forward to better relationship and great things from you all for our children. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Just want to, Velma Wilson?
Yes, good. See, I'm on the other.
And just one more call for Roberto Gomez or Melissa Stevenson. Okay, I'm going to set you aside. Velma, you're the last one for public.
Oh, that was quick. Walk in, get treatment. What a kind of, anyway, so, I missed, I missed, I'm like, I feel all out of sort right now, so you can let me gather my thoughts. Don't tie us to time. Restart that. Restart it, for real.
One time, this is the only time I'm, well, you know what? I'm not presented after this. Give it to her.
So I wanted to just say, I know that I missed the outgoing board going out and the new board coming in, trying to digest all that, but I wanted to say congratulations to the new board. But I wanted to do something so kind of off the wall, really, just to, as we reflect on this time of year, and we also reflect on where we're going, and this is a time to really think about our students and really think about the lives that we are affecting. And today, I was, I had the pleasure of being at Carmen Dragon, the first time where they had a parent engagement coffee and donuts. And I will say, it was very overwhelming to see the families that were just in awe of the show of support and camaraderie that me, as a parent, that don't have children at Carmen Dragon, I don't have elementary students anymore, but just to see other district staff there and to interact and handing them a hot cup of coffee on this cold morning. So I just wanted to just do this real quick. Have yourself a merry little Christmas. May your days be bright. From now on, all problems will be out of sight. Through the years, we'll always be together, if the fates allow. Hang a shining star upon the highest bough. And have yourself a merry little Christmas. Happy holidays.
Thank you. See, you didn't even need the additional time. Okay, Dave, now we go on to staff. Dave Neal?
Good evening, board, and welcome. I am so privileged to be here, and I thank you so much for your support for Restorative Practices at Dallas Ranch. And I have a story to share that actually just occurred today, and it shows the power of what is happening with our families and our students. It shows the power of restorative work with children and families in our community. And so today, I had two boys who had been constantly feuding in a special day class, causing numerous occasions of disruption and just chaos, a lot of difficulty. Finally, we were able to get them together, get their families in the room, and as I go through this series, this process of asking questions of everyone there, because everyone's voice matters. It creates the full circle. Well, as we began to share, one of the mothers, excuse me, who was the mother of the boy who had been causing the other one harm, she suddenly stopped and said, "Mr. Neal, before I answer these questions, I need to say something." And she said, "Tavon," she looked across the room at him, who had been bothering her son, "I have something to share with you and your family." She said, "Do you remember me? I was a bald lady about a little over a year ago, over at Walmart." And he goes, "Not really." He said, "Well, I just had one of my cancer treatments, and I was feeling extremely ill, and I had to go to the grocery store, and when I was there, I'd get him some groceries, and I was feeling really nauseous. So I thought maybe I'd have some coffee and make me feel a little bit better." But after I ordered the coffee, I was so weak and wavering on the grocery cart, I just didn't know if I could make it, and all of a sudden, you came up to me and you said, "Can I help you?" And you went over to get the cup of coffee, and you handed it to her, and you walked her out to her car. And I want to tell you that that showed the connectedness of us as a community, families, children, students, colleagues, administrators. It changed the entire room. And I want to invite the board to come along this journey with me, with us at Dallas Ranch, and at any time, let me know. I'd invite anyone to come and have you as an observer, as you see the magic in the room when people be able, their voice is shared, and we repair the harms done and rebuild our community, make it stronger. So thank you again for your support of me as a TOSA teacher, and sorry, Ms. Anello, I always make you cry, but I always end up crying, I'm not really sure why. But anyway, I really appreciate it, and I just want to leave you with that, that we have tremendous power in our community to come together, and this is one of the ways that we're doing it. So thank you so much for your support of what we do.
Thank you. And as I said, you're a Rotary speaker. You should offer your services to other service clubs. I know you came to our lunch club, there's Serotemas, Kiwanis.
I take all invitations.
Yes, you should, you should let that word get out. It was a wonderful presentation. So that's our public comments for this evening. Now we go into hearings. We have a public hearing on the Children's Internet Protection Act. I'm going to open the public hearing and ask Mr. Gangler to, how do you say your name?
Gangler, sir.
Gangler, okay. To do the staff report, please. Can I just say something, public speakers? If you want to leave, don't feel bad. Okay, I just want to make sure, sometimes I come and speak, and then I leave right away because I have things to do.
Good evening, trustees. President Gibson-Grey, Vice President Rulig, welcome. Trustee Sawyer-White and trustee Vincent, and welcome. Trustee Hack. I'm doing the public hearing on the Children's Internet Protection Act. We're basically recertifying ourselves, as we should be on an annual basis, showcasing to the public what we are doing to protect their children from going into sites that are questionable or malicious in nature. One of the reasons why we are required to do this recertification is it is a requirement as part of our E-Rate participation in our program that provides technological discounts that we can buy our network gear and our internet connections and stuff at a very discounted rate. If we are to be audited, we must show that this has been presented to you and that the public's had an opportunity for comment. So by law, I'm required to showcase these items, compliance with the Children's Internet Protection Act, as we'll refer to ASIPA, and the Protecting Children in the 21st Century Act is a requirement for any applicant requesting E-Rate discounts for the categories of internet access and internal communications and connections, and basic maintenance of internal connections. The main purpose of both acts is to protect minors from harmful content on the internet. Now to talk about our prevention measures. Technology utilizes a web content filtering appliance called the IBOS to filter out inappropriate content from students. This appliance inspects all websites and data being requested on our AUSD-owned workstations. The appliance will intercept content deemed not acceptable and will show a page informing an end user that the website was blocked for the content. Technology maintains the environment to facilitate reporting and data gathering to make sure we are compliant and provide these reports at request. We are also required to designate our internet safety policy that we have publicized. Our Board Policy 6163.4 covers this requirement for internet safety at the district level that has been provided to you and your attachments. All students and staff must also sign and accept the District's Acceptable Use of Technology Agreement, outlining expected norms and behavior of the use of technology on district-owned machines. This is also posted on our website. It's posted as Supplement to Board Policy 6163.4, and it is named the exhibit of 6163.4. And the URL is located at that location of the public, which is to refer to this policy. Any questions from the public or the board as it relates to this agenda item?
Anyone? Nope.
So I just want to ask a question to Ms. Anello. Have we always renewed this every year, or is this something new?
To my knowledge, it's come before the board.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And we'll be doing this on an annual basis to make sure we're compliant, so.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
Nothing else?
Thank you for your time.
Okay, if anyone would like to speak on the matter from the audience, please come forward and do so now. Okay, seeing no one. The public hearing is closed. Thank you, Joe, for that, and we move on to the next item. We have no public presentations, consent items. Is there anything that the board would like to pull or discuss or?
Number Y.
Okay.
Number Y.
Ms. Romeo?
For Intervention Service Coordinator.
Gary, number Y. Anyone else?
And there is an amendment to the Consent Items 13W and X, which is our certificated and classified personnel.
It's rare that there's not a, a, a version.
Revision.
Good, thank you. And Gary, is yours a question, or do you want to pull it for?
Just a question, I guess.
White, Deborah's looking. Do you mind if we go with the question?
Go ahead.
Okay, go ahead.
Me?
Yes, please.
Okay. On Y, it says, "Job description for Intervention Service Coordinator," and it's a request to put this person in place at $80,000 a year. And the only thing I have here is the dollar amount is $800,000.
Well, that was, the first one that's printed is corrected on here. I saw that when it arrived at my home.
Okay.
It's a typo on that one.
Well, that's what I was going to ask. I assumed it was a typo.
Because I was applying for the job.
Or was it a tenure position?
Well, it was a typo, and I apologize.
I assumed that.
So, actually, I sent an email on that earlier.
Thank you.
So, thank you. So, Item C, the Blackboard Agreement for Products and Services.
Okay, and what else?
And I think some of my questions regarding change orders were responded to, and I don't know if when we get to some, I don't know if Chris wanted to add anything extra to any of the questions I had. I just had for you, I just had a, for number you, I had a question about the new student monitor position, and I just wanted to know if that was a floating position or if it's going to be for a specific site.
I believe it's scheduled for a site based on the increase in enrollment, but I would have to get you the exact student or location.
And then, let's see.
Mr. Lernid, while she's looking, did you have anything to add to the information you presented earlier on the facilities change?
Okay, to be specific, the question was a question on K, Change Order 1 for American Asphalt and Resurfacing. And this change order, the extra work was a result of, a large number was a result of the installation of an electric gate for Antioch High School. That's, that's new to me and work that was, that had it done because they put it in. The other work was for the slurry coating, and that was actually added to basically save money. Am I on the right one here?
Yes.
Okay. To save money on doing the work now as opposed to doing the work at the end of the Antioch High School modernization projects. Because we did so much work on the existing parking lot out front, it made sense, why don't we do the whole thing all at once, which included the slurry seal?
Because you love that serious slip. I know.
And trustee Vincent, it is at Lone Trio. I think it's separate in the back from classified.
Thank you. So, for the Blackboard Agreement, it says for updating and redesigning our websites, is that going to be the school board website and then all of the websites at each of the schools?
Yes, it will, it will be a comprehensive replacement of all websites. We enter, we're trying to enter the agreement to take advantage of a very good price point, which also lines up with the correct timeline for this project to succeed. But it will replace all school websites. They will be a common template and common information. They will be mobile-ready, so they will work on your phones. We'll have an app associated with that, and we'll be upgrading our mass communications, where we're consolidating three vendors into one.
Okay. And this is just for the update, not for the maintenance? You'll have someone, is that a part of the contract to update regularly with maintenance and anything new, or is that coming from in-house?
So, the updating, as far as content, will be addressed with our school sites, and we'll be providing adequate training for that. But the maintenance and service on that will be done with Blackboard, and we'll be coming forth to the board next fiscal year to take care of the rest of that contract, but this will allow us to begin our project.
Great, thank you. That was it.
Okay, and Crystal, you had a question on Jay, I believe.
Yes, in regards to the donation of iPads for the storage cart for Fremont Elementary, was this based on this particular school receiving donations, or are other schools entitled for other donations for iPads?
All schools are entitled to donations. This particular school has a parent that works for a corporation that has been providing these iPads for them. We have strict policies on how we can accept that inventory into our systems that we can be compliant with various software licensing agreements. So, we have to formally present that to the board so that you will accept that into inventory, and then we can deploy them out to the school site.
And to keep the iPads in the, on the premises?
Yeah, they'll be at Fremont. They're dedicated to Fremont. And they, actually, this donation includes a secure cart that they can be charged in and secured overnight, which is a standard for all of the iPads we have in our school sites.
Thank you. And I did request that the district send a letter, a thank you, because that's a very generous donation. So, we've answered all the questions from the board on the consent items. We have nothing from the public. Looking around, no. So, is there a motion from a board member on the consent count? All items on the consent with the updates from HR?
I can motion.
That's a motion from Walter?
Second.
Second from Gary. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes five zero. Next, we go to, I'm trying to do paper, and we go to action items. Just to make sure I didn't miss anything. Action Items 14A, Students Stipulated Expulsions E704, 706, 707, and 708. Are there any questions, or is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Hack?
My second.
Second by Ms. Sawyer White. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes five zero. 14B, Students Stipulated Expulsion with Recommendation for Suspended Enforcement, E705. Is there a motion?
So moved.
There's a motion from Ms. Vincent.
Second.
Second by Ms. Sawyer White. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, all those opposed? Motion passes five zero. Okay, first interim report, I love these. Go ahead, Mr. Lernid.
Okay, so, under AB 1200, the board adopts a budget, and the board has to approve what's called the first and second interim reports. This report is for the time period through the end of October. The second time period or the second interim is through the period of the end of January, which the first, the second interim would be due to the board on March 15th. Hard to believe that I've actually been through the whole cycle here. I've done a second interim with you, I've done an adopted budget with you, and now it's the first interim.
Wow.
And I was just going to be here for a little bit.
And we thank you for saying.
Yes, we do.
So, with that, we, the purpose is to provide the detailed changes and to communicate the overall financial condition of the district as of this time period. And we're taking you through the end of November 30, because we've also, for the second or the first interim report, we've made some additional budget adjustments over what you approved on your budget revisions of October 31st. So, this is a little different than what you've seen in the past. So, you have your first, you have your adopted budget, which was on June 22nd. You have your budget revisions, which occurred on, through October 31st, and then tonight, you have this first interim report. So, as the budget year goes on, this spreadsheet will get a little bit wider, the print will get a little bit smaller, but you'll be able to see everything that's happened with your adopted budget all the way until you get to your estimated actuals in June. So, and the other thing that's different on this report, when I saw the first, the second interim report, there were no changes over in the right-hand column. So, how, how does the board or the community know what changed? And not, no fault of the district, that's the direction the district received from the County Office of Education, and I'm scratching my head, and I'm saying, well, in the state forms, it has percentage change. Why would they put percentage change there if it was always zero? So, what you're seeing here is that, you're not seeing percentage in this sheet, but you're seeing the difference between what the board approved in October and what the board is, what we hope the board is going to approve tonight. So, those are the changes. So, from October 31st through, through actually November 30th, revenue changed by $912,000. Expenditures changed by $965,000. So, basically, a wash between revenue and expenditures between October 31st and November 30th. Next slide is the changes. So, I'm going to actually have Mia talk about the changes because she's the one that does all the hard work.
Good evening, everyone. So, every year, there are many unpredictable factors affecting revenues and expenditures, and it is critical that we utilize the budget assumptions based on the best information available. And as variables change, it is necessary that we make formal adjustments and approved by the governing board throughout the course of the year. And here are the changes in the budget. We have the LCFF revenue. The gap funding rate used for 2016-17 first interim is 54.18%. It's a slight decrease of .66% from when we adopted the budget in June, which was 54.84%. The decrease is equivalent to approximately 119,000 loss in revenue. Our district is actually now 87% of the way to full implementation. And also, there is a slight increase in federal revenue of $47,000. And for the state revenue, last month, our district received the preliminary entitlement for the college readiness block grant, and this grant is to provide additional services that support access and successful transition to higher education, and these funds can be spent over three years. For the local revenue, a substantial increase in this category was mainly because of the CTG and the ROP grant and the Wellness Room Agreement grant. This is, the Wellness Room Agreement is a grant secured by the county, and Park Middle School has been selected as the pilot school in participation in this grant. We also have budget changes in our expenditures area. So, for the certificated salaries, the, mainly it's for the step and column increases and some reclassification of the carryover money. And also, for the classified salaries, we reactivated some vacant positions. The increase in the employee benefits is associated with the certificated and classified salaries increases. The books and supplies is just a reclassification of the 15-16 carryover, same as the services and other operating expenses. The capital outlay is also a reclassification for some technology upgrades. And the indirect cost is associated with the federal and other state revenue increases.
Doesn't she do a nice job? Okay, so, again, the first sheet that you saw was the combined budget. So, the, we have the, what's called the unrestricted and the restricted funds. So, this is the unrestricted, this is the area that you have the most flexibility with spending. So, a drop in the ending fund balance in that by 1, 1,061,000. The restricted changes, just the opposite, a million dollars change in the ending fund And then, we have the components of the ending fund balance. So, we have 22,803,000 in the ending fund balance, and you can see how it's, how it's reserved. So, we have legally restricted for categorical programs. The designation for economic uncertainty, that's the statutory 3%. And budget, or actually, in August, the board approved a 2% reserve above that, which is good for the district to have. As I've said, if you hit the 3% reserve, you dip into it, you're basically a qualified district because you can't touch that 3% reserve without replenishing it right away. So, the 2% gives the district some breathing room in case of unforeseen expenses. Textbooks, we've set aside a million dollars for book adoption. Adam, I forget which, which cycle that is.
World Languages.
Right, World Languages. Supplemental concentration reserve, one-time discretionary funds, and these funds were the, are the result of receiving mandate reimbursement costs. It's one-time money. The governor would like to see us spend it for Common Core-type of things. We, staff is currently reviewing the possibility of using a significant amount of these one-time discretionary funds to fix a technology system that's on the verge of a nervous breakdown. That's best, I can say it. Okay, so, we are also required by EDCO to demonstrate that you, that the district is fine this year, but also the subsequent two fiscal years, or what we call the multi-year financial projections. So, these are based on our budget assumptions, and this is the combined. And you can see our ending fund balance is going down a little, over down to 17 million in fiscal year 2018-19. These are going to change fairly quickly because the governor will introduce his budget sometime in the middle of December, I think actually on December 10th, to be exact. And so, we will begin to plug in numbers that will change our outlook for 17, 18, and 18, 19. Did I say the wrong date? Oh, did I say December? No, that's too fast. January. I heard something going. So, but this is where we are as of now, based on our projections. It does not include salary increases. It does not increase benefits. It only includes things like, right, stirs and purrs, which are going up significantly, and step and column movement, and then other slight changes and due to CPI on books and supplies and things like that. We've broken down our components of the ending fund balance by fiscal year, so 16, 17, 17, 18, 18, 19. I don't see a whole bunch of need to walk you through that. Does she have questions? The board has three ways to go. We could declare positive, qualified, or negative. Qualified and negative, the district doesn't want to go down that road, and we're happy to inform the board that the district will be able to meet its financial obligations for the current subsequent two fiscal years. And staff is recommending that the Board of Education approve the first interim report. That also includes budget revisions through November 30th, 2016.
Can I add? I think one thing that we've been saying for years is that the district is deficit spending. I'm happy to report that the district is no longer deficit spending.
Thank you.
Questions from the board? Anyone? I have a question. When are we going to talk about the money that we have left over, and when are we going to?
We're, we're working on that. I met with Joe, actually, five minutes before the board meeting. I said, "Joe, where are we?" I was hoping January 25th board meeting. He suggested that it would be the first board meeting in February.
Okay, because we do have a, as you said, a soon-to-be crazy technology issue, so.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Next, we move to receive Antioch Charter Academy petition.
Need approval of the.
Oh, we do?
Yes.
Oh, come on. Okay, is there a motion to approve?
I can motion.
Motion by Ms. Ruley?
Second.
Second by Ms. Vincent. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. And I want to thank you again for Doug and Mia putting this together. They spent a lot of hard hours on this.
And, and I like the fact that you're getting tighter and tighter with your, you know, they're not really far apart numbers from the first budget to.
Correct.
So, you guys got a good handle on the budget. Thank you very much. As you prepare to leave us, Chris, that's another story.
That's true. This, this, I believe, is my last board meeting.
Okay.
He just thinks that.
Okay. Okay, you're up next. Receive Antioch Charter Academy Petition Renewal.
Okay, so, the district received the Char, Antioch Charter 2 Petition Renewal. They want to extend their charter by five years. I've actually taken time to go out to actually both their charter schools. I went to one of their board meetings. I visited Charter 2 School over at the fairgrounds. We've discussed it with cabinet for curriculum and special ed services. So, to be consistent, what you're, what we're asking you tonight is to receive the petition that will start the 60-day timeline. I talked to, based on the timeline, when you're receiving it, your next board meeting is beyond the 30 days. I talked to the administration at ACA- I talked to the administration at ACA II. They're fine with this going to the board on January 25th. And because we see no issues with this charter, we will be working with them on their MOU. That's, at that particular meeting, we would ask the board to do the public hearing and approve the charter. So that's kind of the timeline that we're looking at. I believe you all received binders with everything that ACA II provided. So that's all we're asking is.
Because our next meeting is January 25th. We don't have any meetings in between.
Mr. Larned, sorry, I'm so sorry. Mr. Larned, so in the past, when, when we've had a charter school that's simply renewing a petition, has this been how we've?
My understanding is that's how it's been handled.
Okay.
In fact, yeah, that's right.
Thank you.
Okay, you have a question?
Yes, I'd like to view the site before I approve this.
Yeah, that's fine. So tonight, you're not approving anything, you're accepting the petition.
Before I accept.
Oh, okay.
I want to view the site. That's what I want to say.
Okay, next.
And so I understand you, you talked about the MOU, and of course, I have a number of different questions.
Yeah.
And I have a lot of concerns. So I would want there to be a capacity interview around special ed. I've looked at the petition and what's outlined and some of the, you know, like I, I know that it was signed years ago under certain conditions. And so I would want to review that. I know you, I know you guys are thinking about January 25th, having us have the hearing and also approving it the same night. And I just want to make sure that gives parents enough time, you know, to provide us feedback. I've already gotten feedback from people in the community about the charter, and I just want to make sure there's time to include some of that, some of that dialogue.
And can that be done at a special board meeting, or you just have to be at a regular board meeting?
It can be done at a special board.
Special board meeting.
Okay, I think we may have to call a special board meeting because I would want to look at those details, especially around the special ed concern. And then I visited the site, but I'd like to go back again for a more comprehensive visit. And I think probably send, we'll try to compile questions and send them to you all so you have them ahead of time.
Right.
And so that you're able to respond. But I would like for special ed, I know that they also have an administrative team. There's just a couple of different things I really think we need to think about.
That's, that's fine.
So am I hearing this, the will of the board to hold a special meeting?
I don't have a problem with it.
Right. Well, again, you have rights.
For the, for the hearing, and then separate from the.
Separate to answer questions.
You could do the public hearing sooner, absolutely, and then adopt, or would have to count the 60 days from tonight. So just to go back to Crystal, we're under strict guidelines as to how these dates work. And so we can't say, well, I'm not going to accept it tonight because it's, it's on your table. So you've got it. Some, so for example, the Rocket Ship petition, they argued that as soon as they handed it to Stephanie on September 30th, that counted, that started the timeline. And we went back and said, no, it's when the board receives it. So you have received the petition, so that starts the timeline.
Okay, and. You can speak after me.
Yeah, I have an issue with the child abuse history, and I think a teacher is still working there.
Okay.
Yes, that's why.
Yeah, no, I, that's perfectly fine.
Okay.
So that's something, you know, we can bring up during the public hearing. So I understand now that we want a separate public hearing. And, and, and you know, October 25th, so tonight, or it's October.
I'm already looking at the calendar. You want me to help you out here?
Yes.
So I think we have to approve it by, we have to approve or disapprove February 8th because it should be the 14th, but that's a Tuesday, and that would be our first meeting in February. So what we could do is still have the meeting the 25th. Answer any questions or bring forward any questions.
Right.
It's a general meeting, so it's probably better for the public. And then we can have the approval moved to the 8th. Does that sound fair?
That works.
To everybody?
Right.
Okay. And that's one less meeting we have to do, so.
Right.
And then I would want, prior to the 25th and prior to staff recommendations, I'd like for there to be a capacity interview. I would, we'll work with the superintendent with that, just so we cover all bases.
Okay.
And I am not going to agree with it because, I mean, I just, if we don't say anything, it looks like we're deferring to that. So I'm just going to say, if it's not required, I'm not expecting it. The other thing I was going to say.
President, I'd also ask that we have a, I'd also ask that we have some sort of a history, at least a recent history of our oversight, just.
Okay.
Just so we can see what we've been doing.
Yes.
Okay, and I was just going to finish. As far as site visits, we're all welcome to go there, make an appointment, or just, I've even shown up at the door there when I first came on the school board, and I've always been welcomed. So it's not something we do as a district because we would have to agendize it. So feel free to stop by the school, correct? And you're going to be speaking in a minute anyway. So, go ahead.
Jeannie, how many years have you been in existence?
Why don't we wait till she talks?
Oh, she's.
She's going to talk, yes. Okay, anybody else, questions for staff?
And so I just want to comment and say, some of those concerns can be covered in a capacity interview. I'll follow up with you about that.
Okay. So any other questions for staff? Okay, now, Jeannie Dubinsky. And I probably said it wrong, too. I slaughter everybody's names.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for accepting our petition. We're very excited about this. I have been a teacher in Antioch for 42 years. I was a student as well. Started at four years old at Fremont Elementary, went through Antioch Middle, and then graduated from Antioch High School. I am one of the founders of Antioch Charter Academy and a founder of Antioch Charter Academy II. The second campus is just a replicated site of the first campus. It's been in existence for 10 years, and our initial charter has been 18 years in 1998. We really would like everyone to come and visit. You really don't need to make an appointment, but you certainly can call, and we know we'll be ready for you regardless. It's a great opportunity. What happened was we allowed public students to have Montessori experience. Typically, it was a private endeavor for children. We were the first in Contra Costa County to be a charter. The first charter that opened in the United States was a Montessori charter, so we were kind of kindred spirits with them. We also offer many other programs that you will see in your reading. But with the most important pieces, we'd like to extend our invitation for you to come visit. So thank you.
Mr. Hack had a question?
No, it's fine.
No, I answered.
Mr. Hack and I, we taught together at Sutter. I was at Sutter and at Kimball when I taught.
Thank you very much. Okay, any other comments from the audience hearing? Seeing none. Is there a motion to receive the Charter Academy petition? So moved. A motion by Ms. Vincent?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hack. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Did you vote for it? Did you vote to receive it?
I received.
Okay, you're a yes.
I'm going to give it a sign.
Okay, motion passes 5-0. Okay, next, we go to approval of employment contract for Associate Superintendent Business and Operations, Ms. Anello.
I'm going to defer to Ms. Romeo, who actually.
Ms. Romeo.
In front of the board, in front of the board this evening is an employment contract under AB 1344. Under the Elections Code, we are required to bring any senior management contract out in public and show all of the provisions within the contract at our last board meeting. The board did approve Teresa Santa Maria, who was coming to us with in excess of 10 years of experience in business and operations, facilities, and maintenance. So I would ask the board to approve this contract this evening. We do have a salary schedule for, for senior management, and so Ms. Santa Maria would be on that senior management salary schedule.
Thank you. Any questions from Ms. Romeo? Is there a motion?
Motion.
A motion by Mr. Rulick? Second by?
Second.
Ms. Sawyer White? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5, all those opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Okay, next, we have Measure C, bond refunding and issuance.
Okay, yes. So as the write-up says, in an effort to save the taxpayers of some dollars, there's an opportunity to do a refinance on some bonds that were issued Series A and B for Measure B. And in the write-up, I said $1.9 million. Well, it's turned out that that's, the bond market's changing very quickly, so this number is no longer valid. But, so tonight, David Olson and Charlie Feinstein.
You got it. You got it right. You got it.
Will be sharing. So Dave is our bond advisor, Charlie is the underwriter, to do a presentation with the board. And with no further ado, I introduce.
Great. Thank you, Chris.
Okay.
Just briefly, it's a pleasure to be in front of the board again. Ms. Anello, President Gibb Gray. I've been coming to this board since the late 90s, worked with a gentleman named Jerry Macy, who was the CBO back then, and worked with the district on its two successful bond measures. So it's my pleasure to actually continue that tradition of working with your district. I think I'll give Dave a chance to just introduce himself.
Okay, sure. My name's Dave Olson, and as Chris said, we're, I work at PFM. And as Chris said, we're the financial advisor to the district. So the financing team's been, been working on this, this idea for, for some time, and we appreciate your time tonight to kind of go through some of the specifics of it. Later this evening, the board's going to be considering two separate resolutions, one to refund existing bonds and one to issue new money bonds. And together, these resolutions will allow the district to move forward with a financing plan that's, that's good for taxpayers because it reduces existing obligations, good for students because it allows you to put some more money into renewing facilities, and it's, it's good for the district because the district, I think, is, is behind in its facility maintenance program. And any, any way to make progress along those lines is going to be a good thing. The, the two parts work together, which is one of the reasons we wanted to make a detailed presentation tonight, because essentially, the, the more savings we can produce in the refunding transaction, the more we can unlock the access to the, the new money bonds. We're also limited in the amount of new money bonds by the district's desire to implement this financing in a responsible way. We could raise more money if we, today, if we push more debt on, on the back of future taxpayers, and we want to be careful in, in managing that program. And I, I want you to know enough about it so that we can, you're comfortable answering questions, that this is a conservatively built program. So that being said, I like to provide a little context, big picture going back to the beginning. District's been doing a fairly good job of putting money into its facilities on a regular basis. First in the 90s, when the, the big growth, a lot of the money was put into the, the new area of town through the CFD program. More recently, the SFID in the older area of town has allowed us to make some improvements there. District's made a couple of important strategic decisions. This is consistent with both of those. I'm going to be talking specifically about them in a second. And now we have an opportunity that's created by recent, by low interest rates, which in historical sense are still low, Charlie, we'll talk about the market conditions a little bit later, and good growth, returning growth to the tax base gives us an opportunity to unlock this 2008 Measure B program, which had been, we had set it aside for some time. Next. So in the background, 2008 Measure C, that's the, the more, that's the original financing plan. I think we said B a couple of times, but C is the 2008, passed by 62.5% vote in favor. Legally allowed you to sell up to $61 million worth of bonds. We've sold about 40. And legally allowed you to tax at a rate of about 60, of up to $60 per 100,000. Now, the plan was to, was to issue bonds in 2008, 2010, 2012. But though we were allowed to tax up to $60, the original estimate put in the tax rate statement said we taxed at $28 per 100,000. So that was the estimate put in 2008. Remember, the 10 years before 2008 were good years, right? The set, the tax base was growing very quickly. So it was, we based on a pretty conservative assumption, 4% growth. We still use 4% growth in a lot of our programs. Next.
If I can just interject.
Sure.
You know, as you said, as Dave said.
To the microphone because we're recording you.
Sorry. As Dave said, the tax base was really growing at like double digits, 10, 12% a year. So when we held that election, it was, there were, there were some sense of the market was teetering, but there was no clear sense that it was going to fall off a cliff. So we, we built a program around what we thought was a conservative assumption of 4% growth annually, and then it start, your tax base started to shrink dramatically. So that, that's what got us into that situation, which is sort of a, almost a once-in-a-lifetime thing that, you know, tech, home values in this community dropped by a half. So anyway, let's give you some background.
No, that's exactly right. And we live and learn, and the district's tax base had, between Prop 13 and 2008, had never declined in value. And you can see here, the declines were pretty rapid in 2008, '09, 2009, '10. Within the SFID, it lost a little bit more than 30% of its value. District-wide, it lost, as Charlie said, close to half its value. But you can see, it started to restore at the bottom. We've grown 15, 13, 3, 6 in the last few years. So that growth and low interest rates are giving us an opportunity. Next. So what happened when that, the housing market went off a cliff is, is the district had, had two decisions that it made. In 2010, it said, remember the, the stimulus program? One of the elements of the stimulus program was subsidized bonds. The government offered shovel-ready projects, some subsidies. So the district chose to issue $20 million of these QSCB bonds. All those had to be repaid within 20 years. So the shorter repayment, or 15 years, the shorter repayment schedule meant that the tax rates had to be higher because the payments were higher, and the district voted to increase to authorize taxes up to the $60 level, which was the maximum allowable by law, to take advantage of that program, but said at the same time, we're going to suspend further issuance under the 2008 program. So instead of going after 2008, and you got a lot of proposals to go forward with a little bit more aggressive structures, cabs and all that kind of stuff, the district said, no, we're going to suspend issuance, we're going to move on to the next program. The next program was 2012 Measure B. That was approved by, again, 63% of the vote, $56.5 million. Now, you know, look at this, $56.5 million, we said would cost us $50. So live and learn, we, we learned our lesson, we built a more conservative program. And again, we based it on 4% growth, but starting from a lower base. So if you look at the next slide, that's, all the bonds have been sold, and those two lines represent what the revenues would be at $60 and what they'd be at 4980, our estimate, and the, the bars at the bottom represent what our obligations are. So assuming 4% growth will be well below those tax rate targets on 2012 Measure B. So that's a conservative program that's going to be brought in ahead of schedule and under budget, and that's fantastic. But leads us back to Measure C. So Measure C, you see, has that, the red line is what $60 would generate, and we're pretty much up to that level because these QSCB bonds, the 2008 Series C, had to be repaid in 15 years. So moving those payments forward created this constraint. So that's what was slowing the issuance. But this refunding is going to give us an opportunity to save some money in some of those impacted years and issue the new money bonds. One of the reasons why we want to have this discussion is the amount of savings is going to influence the size of the refunding bonds. I'm going to get back to that later, but I think the next, we're going on to Charlie this one.
Oh, okay. So, so in terms of projected tax rates, you know, these are the current projected tax rates, and you can see that squeeze point between 22 and about 26 is again, where those bars were going up. That was, that was the Build America Bonds, I'm sorry, the QSCB Bonds. And they were a great deal because they were short and they were subsidized, but the term was set so short that you had to pay off all the bonds very early. So with this refunding, as you'll see on the next slide, we're going to take the savings and we're going to basically, between those, between those years, we're going to apply the savings and create a, create space. the savings and create a, create space for new money, without going over the tax rate. In terms of the market, you know, since the election of Donald Trump, I don't know if anyone's been reading the, I don't know, Living Under a Rock, interest rates have gone up about 75 basis points, that's almost 1%. In recent trading sessions, there's been a little bit of a pullback, now we're down to about 60 basis points. So interest rates have gone up, however, if you go to the next slide, and, and, and you can also see at the bottom right-hand, these are inflows into municipal funds and outflows, so you can see, people are, money is coming out, supply, demand, money's coming out of municipal bond funds, to the tune of 3 billion, 2 billion, you know, about 2.4 billion a month, I'm sorry, a week since the election, whereas before, we were seeing inflows. So folks are taking their money out of fixed income, and guess what is going up? The stock market. So they're taking their money out of here, and putting it in the stock market. Who knew? That, that wouldn't have been my guess, but that's what's happening. So we go to the next slide, we're still at very, very, very low interest rates, so these bars, if you look at these bars, each bar represents a maturity, so, you know, you've got a two-year maturity, and a 15, and a 30-year maturity, and over, since 1993, you've got the top interest rate, so if you go to 30, the top interest rates since 93 was 7% just shy, and then, you know, at the bottom, it was 2%, and that's over since 1993. The low before the election is that gray line, the red is where we are now, post the election, the blue is the average since 1993, so we're still in a very, very low interest rate, and historically, low interest, we're just above the very, very bottom rates, the bottom was around June, July of this year, when we saw historically low interest rates that no one had seen, really, since anyone could remember, so it's, we're still, we're still in a good place in terms of historical, historically where the interest rates are. I think there's one more slide. Okay, so in this slide, you can see, with the refunding, 22 through 26, that's where we would put the savings to offset the QSCB, which had to mature, you know, in those 15 years, and that would give us the space to then layer in debt service for this new money. So you can see, under refunding savings, those negative numbers, those are the, that's the savings coming out of what's owed on debt service, and that's going to be filled in by new debt service for the new bonds you, you would be issuing, and the, the net effect is, you know, you go to the next slide, which is Dave's, you're, you're still under.
Right, so the idea here is that you've been loving taxes that have been as high as 57, 80, and one of the direction from Chris is, we want to issue these new bonds without causing the tax rates to go higher than they were at the maximum during the program, so they'd still be lower than what the legal maximum were, and still lower than what the maximum in the past has been, so the concept that, just to hit it again, is that column refunding savings, the more negative those numbers are, the higher the Series D figures can be, and we'll have a program that is below what the max has been in the past, but still allows us to get at more bonds. How much, we don't know, wanted, uncertainty is what I wanted to explain in this presentation, next. So the sensitivity analysis, if we get a million dollars in present value savings, and we're targeting a 57, 80 tax rate, will likely be generate $10 million worth of bonds. If we have $400,000 more savings, so that's about a quarter percent lower in interest rates than it is now, we'd be able to get 16.6 million dollars, so it's very interest rate sensitive, and if we were willing to go up to the maximum legal limit, $60, now we'd be able to get all $20 million. That's why we built $20 million, is the maximum size here, that's not necessarily the size we're going at, because we want that to be subject to these other limitations. So the things we could do, if we wanted to have a bigger new money size, would be adjust the savings structure to allow for more savings in constrained years, that would have some negative savings in other years, we didn't really want to do that, but we could, if there's a strong desire to get $20 million, we can stay back, we could adjust the couponing structure on new money bonds, some of these are discussions that Charlie and I have been having for some time, adjust tax, tax-based growth assumptions, you know, 4% is probably a little low for next year, so we're going to be making some independent judges here, but Chris is going to make sure that we're hitting the targets that you're establishing tonight, and that we're reviewing with you tonight, and having a conservative program, next. So our objectives here, built into the resolution, we'll have at least $600,000 in present value savings to do the refunding. We'll have the upfront cost to be $175,000, kind of our goal in upfront costs, as I've said when I've presented before the board in the past, is to collect the comparables from prior transactions that everybody who's done similar transactions all around the state have done, and get below the median, so we want bond council fees to be below the median, we want FA fees to be below the median, we want all the fees to be below the median, the term of the refunding bond will not exceed the term of the bonds being refunded, and we won't have negative save, we won't, we will have savings in every year, so no taxpayer's going to be disadvantaged, and we won't push out the debt, so that's the goal on the refunding. Terms of the new money bonds, we want to get as much money as we can, we want to keep the costs low, like I said, we want to keep the term matching to the projects being refunded, and we want to keep the tax rate at 57, 80. So why do we say 6, 57, 80, I think that's the next page? Because 57, 80 was the highest tax rate during the Measure C program, so in 2010, 11, it was, 57, 80 was, was the tax rate, since then, tax rates in the district have been higher than that, but largely because of Measure B, and we can't legally go above 50, above $60 anyway. So this will be consistent with the decision made by the district in 2010, when you issued the QSCBs, and be lower than the maximum that's already been levied. Cost of issuance, we're required to disclose cost of issuance before we work on a financing, you had 175 for the refunding bond, 95 for the new money bonds, combination of $270,000, all of those fees, will demonstrate to Chris, will be below the median for similarly sized transactions. The idea of doing both together saves, makes that job a little easier, to be honest. So the resolution that you're approving tonight, authorized the issuance of both the refunding bonds and the new money bonds, it establishes the basic conditions, already went through the minimum savings levels, things like that, describes the important mechanics of the two bond issues, right, that's why it's a thick document, specifies that the bonds will be sold by negotiated sale with Raymond James as the underwriter, and approves certain documents as to form, so. Wanted to provide that context, to kind of, the, the big picture is this is a financing that works well for taxpayers, well for students, well for the district, we're going to be careful to make sure that we structure it in a conservative way, that's consistent with past decisions of the district, and we're going to control costs to keep them below the median.
So, as I said, I, there's an opportunity to save the taxpayers' money by refunding, I'm very excited about that, I'm disappointed that 1/4% costs so much. Now, the, the reason I'm bringing forward the board to consider the issuance of bonds is I had the opportunity to go out to, I, it started at Turner Elementary School, I, I was absolutely shocked at the condition of that school. Heating and air conditioning system that's barely working, roofs that are leaking, ceilings that are coming down in the office, so the purpose to, for the board to consider that is to take care of some of the urgent needs. I, I actually visited all of the schools that were covered under Measure C, so I, I call it the older Antioch versus the newer Antioch, so this Measure C was to cover the older school. Mission was another school that has a lot of problems with their HVAC, their roof, the glue lamp beams, which are the big beams on the covered walkway, are virtually rotted out, so I see some of the work that we have to get done is urgent, it's uncertain, as Dave and Charlie said, of how much the district can, if the board approves this, sell an additional bonds, so I gave the board kind of an, an outline of the things that have to be done. If the board approves this tonight, we would develop a budget, and depending how much we can sell, actually, we will develop a budget that prioritizes the schools, that you will see, okay, so for Turner Elementary School, it is, say, $4 million, I don't, I don't know, I'm just pulling a number, so $4 million in construction costs, 4 million, you know, probably 20% in soft costs, which includes your design, your inspections and all that stuff, so you can see, okay, so this is an identified project, this is what we're going to do at Turner, and do it for each school, and that the board would approve that list of projects, and the citizens oversight committee would also approve it, so you'd know what is going to be done, and be assured that it's going to get done, because it's, it would be approved by you and the oversight committee.
Questions? Questions on the board?
So actually, I appreciate the report, and of course, I appreciate the savings to taxpayers, and I was very disappointed to see that our schools have been neglected for so long, and, and that our staff has worked in those conditions, and so, you know, when I look at this report, and I look at the disclaimer, makes me a little nervous, so, you know, because part of this is getting in there and getting it done in the current market conditions, is that correct?
That's right. The amount of new money bonds depends on the amount of savings, the amount of savings depends on the interest rates.
Because you don't want to go over, you can't, you act, you can't actually go over 60.
Right.
It's, you can't. So that's dependent on interest rates.
What would be the tipping point on interest rates?
Where you, where you would not be able to issue anything? Oh, I don't see that, you're going to be able to issue something, it's a matter of how much.
Day-by-day change?
Yeah, the market is very, very volatile right now.
Exactly.
It goes up and it goes down on a daily basis.
The, the resolution authorizes the financing as long as the savings are at least $600,000. One of the reasons that savings figure, you want to have a minimum savings figure is because you want to have the taxpayers that more benefit than the, than the consultants, right? So there's $300,000 of consultant benefit, 600 is, is a little narrow, will hopefully be over a million dollars in savings.
When I was first broached, any other questions before I talk? When I was first broached, that you hit my marks, as I have two homes in these areas, and I don't want to see it go up past that mark.
Right.
And I didn't want to extend the debt, it's like when you refinance and you add in 30 years again, you never seem to get out, and the third thing, just for grins, no technology funded by this, because I want to pay this long on technology, we spent a lot of technology in the last one, and what, you weren't here.
That's correct.
So.
I, I agree, I wasn't here, and I did see a lot of technology in the previous issuance, but the project list that I would bring forward to the board is, is really major, what I would call major maintenance projects.
Well, since.
Right.
You, you may not be here, just leave that note on the, on the desk.
I understand.
Because it's like paying for a car that's already died, you know, I just don't want
Again, I can assure you, because I always do that, Diane, my first board meeting, I said, trust me.
Yeah, yeah.
I would put together, prior to the new CBO coming on board, you will absolutely know what the project lists are going to be, and, and what's going to get done, and if this were to go forward, what would be the close of this deal?
I believe we're shooting for, like, pricing on the 24th?
Of January.
24th of January, so.
Okay.
Close, the closing would be in early February.
We're moving relatively quickly after this election, given that the interest rate movements, this is the, we put together the, the resolutions, we're, we're meeting with the rating agencies next week, we're, this is not at, at breakneck pace, but this is going to be pretty quick.
Okay, that was my other question, so by the 24th, so the markets are still projected to be decent.
We're more comfortable selling a bond in January than in February or March.
Yeah, I, I'll give you the feedback, I think, from, from the desk's perspective, there, there is a dearth of demand, and supply keeps coming, people are pulling their money out, and so that's why we have this up and down, almost on a daily basis. Folks are expecting after the new year, for things to settle out, and sort of get into a range.
I'm always a what-if.
Who would have ever thought the Dow was going to, was within 89 points of hitting 20,000 yesterday?
Those of us who are in bonds didn't think so.
It's not what I was expecting.
No, neither was I.
So, with this, staff is recommending the Board of Education approve taking the necessary steps to do the refund and issue Measure C bonds, and.
Guarantee is going to go in that particular direction, that you share in terms of improvement for the buildings.
Yes, absolutely.
And no technology.
Right.
So is there a motion?
Looks like a win-win, so I'll put the motion forward.
We have a motion by Mr. Rulick, is there a second?
I second.
Second by Ms. Sawyer White, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes 5-0, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you again for the opportunity, and, and we appreciate the, the targets set by the board, they indicate the board's interest, and give us something to shoot for, thanks.
Right, thank you. Okay, next we move on to item G, I don't know what number, because I'm not going back up, election of the board, for the president of, the Board of Education, a little bit of history here, the last election was me as president, and that's all I have here, I personally would recommend that the vice president moves into the president's role, so that would be my recommendation, do we have questions or comments?
Walter has a history of being president in the past, and is certainly vice president and second termian, and whatever, so I think it would be logical.
So that sounds like a motion to me.
Do you accept it?
I do.
Okay, so I'll second.
Okay, if anybody doesn't accept anything, just yell out, okay? We have a motion, a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0, second by Ms. Vincent. Okay, next we have election, the vice president for the Board of Education, is there conversation?
I would nominate Deborah Vincent, under the same theory that, that's been our protocol and precedent and tradition to rotate.
Okay, that's a motion, is there a second?
I second.
Is there a conversation? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, wait a minute.
Do you accept it? I do, thank you, Diane, thank you.
All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. Okay, election, excuse me, I'm trying to get through this meeting, election of the Board of Representatives, CFD 89-1, for a one-year term, file history, Deborah Vincent was elected to this one-year term in December of 2015. Actually, I have a home over there, too, I'd be interested if nobody else wants it. Do you have a, do you have a null or a shell? You're not nullers, okay, so I would like to take it, motion, that's a motion, I will accept, is there a second? Second by Ms. Vincent, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Election of Board Representative, CFD 89-1, file history, Walter was elected to this two-year term, at the December 24th board meeting, is anybody interested in it? He will be president, so he has other things to do, is there any volunteers?
Would you like it, Karen?
Sure, I'll take it.
Sorry, can you walk in? Okay, so I assume that was a motion, Ms. Vincent, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Sawyer White, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
The good news is they meet once a year.
And I no longer have that on my bill for that house, so, yes, I love it. Election of Board Member Liaison to Contra Costa County School Boards Association, file history, Deborah Vincent was last elected, and I think she's doing a darn good job, if she would like to continue, how about you guys think?
I think she's doing well.
I second.
Okay, I'll, I'll stay as treasurer over there.
That's a motion? And the second by Mr. Hack, so motion by Ms. Sawyer White, second by Mr. Hack, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes 5-0, how am I doing here, folks? How am I doing here, folks? We're going to get you out of here. Certificate of Signatures, do I have to do anything? No, we just have to sign them. Do we have to vote on anything? Okay, we have to prove that school districts are required to have on file at the County Office of Education a certificate of signatures which authorize school board members and certain designated staff to sign warrants, contracts and notices of employment. A new certificate of signatures paired each year with the reorganization of the board. Since we just did that, would somebody like to approve this?
So moved.
We have a motion by Ms. Vincent?
Second.
Second by Ms. Sawyer White, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Discussion of items requested by the board, we have none. Resolutions for first reading, we have none. Resolution for, resolutions for immediate action, we can take them as a whole unless you all want to do them separately. Let's do them separately. Resolution 201617, 16 authorizing teachers to teach outside of credential authorization. Any questions, comments, concerns?
So I just have a, a question. So you tend to bring this, it seems like it comes to every meeting, so can you just expand on that?
Sure, we have had, we have had a few additional ones this year, primarily these are, with the exception of math, is a elective courses such as opportunity in Abbott that there's not a separate credential for. We did discover, actually today, Mr. McKean is actually probably going to get his PE credential, he came from out of state and when it came over to California, they picked up his health but not his PE. So I do want the board to approve it this evening and as we have lost some teachers, either two folks going out due to illness or other reasons, we have picked up some of our teachers graciously agreeing to pick up a sixth period so that our students have coverage and not day-to-day subs through the end of the year.
This is not a new idea, this is happening.
Yes, it happens often.
Okay, any other questions? Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
A motion by Mr. Rulick?
Second.
Second by Ms. Vincent, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. This is also you, Ms. Romeo, a resolution 201617, authorizing provisional internship permit.
This actually is a position that became vacant mid-year and this is a classified employee that I'm happy to announce has gone through a credential program. She will be finishing it at the end of the school year, but prior to her finishing, she knows the student, she knows the school, and she's going to be on a PIP through the end of the year and then she will get her preliminary credential at the end of that time.
Sounds like a win-win for everybody, is there a motion?
Absolutely.
Motion by Mr. Hack, second by?
So moved.
Ms. Vincent, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. Okay, as we just heard from our bond counselors and Mr. Learned, we have, just a moment. Authors approval of resolution 20161718 for the authorizing of the issuance and sale of 2017 refunding Measure C general obligation bonds. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Rulick, second by?
Second.
Ms. Sawyer White, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries 5-0. Okay, approval, somewhere, approval of resolution 20161719 authorizing the issuance and sale of Measure C general obligation bonds in the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $20,752,944. Is there a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion by Ms. Vincent, second by Ms., who did it?
I did.
Ms. Sawyer White, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Walter, keep this in mind, this is what we do, get us out of here early. Okay, we go down to number 21, we have nothing until 21, which is the Contra Costa Community College District and College and Career Access Pathways, CCAP Dual Enrollment Partnership Agreement. Who is this one?
This is me.
Thank you.
So what this is, is these are, this is a partnership that we have with Los Madanos College and we have five separate MOUs with them already for, that fall under this particular, this particular item. And so what this is, is this brings them all together and this was initiated by Los Madanos as something that they needed in order for them to be able to fund these programs.
Again, a win-win.
So we have one MOU.
No, we have five.
So we do have five, so they didn't consolidate, okay. Just want to make sure I heard you correctly.
Okay, any other questions?
MOUs address different issues.
MOUs for different courses.
Yeah.
So currently we're doing five courses, we're doing five concurrent enrollment courses with them, this brings them all under one contract.
Would this be renewed possibly?
Yes.
2018, 2019?
We, we would hope so, yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So regarding Los Madanos, I received a letter from someone and I wrote her back. So when I get more details, I'll connect her with you, but, you know, I was trying to understand what she was requesting because she was asking that we implement a program here with our students so that they come in having the basic skills. I'll connect her to you and it's good to know that we have this MOU going, so I'll be able to, when she responds again, follow up with her about that.
Absolutely.
But I, she has some very specific concerns and she didn't put a contact in there, so when she follows through, I'll make sure I forward it on.
Please do, thank you.
Okay, with that, do we have a motion to approve?
I think it's just information.
Hope it's information, don't need one.
Yeah, thank you.
See, we got information for, items for general information, nothing. Future agenda items from board members, are there any?
Yes.
Ms. Vincent?
So one of the issues that comes up over and over again is our facilities permit. And I'd like for us to talk about that and invite the public to come and listen so that there's a clear understanding about fees, how much we're charging, there just seemed to be a lot of confusion about that and I don't know if there are other board members that have people complaining about that or reaching out about it or don't feel that it's equitable, so I just want to put that out there. Ms. Nello?
Yes, I'm, I'm glad you brought that up. I know Ms. Sawyer White also brought a concern or at least wants more information about the items, so I will work with the new board president to.
Yes, and staff is also in the process of redoing the facilities use fee schedule, so it's perfect timing actually.
Yeah, it is.
So does the board agree it should be a future agenda item? Sounds like your decision.
Yes, I just wanted to say the revision is from 2010, so that's.
Oh, it hasn't been revisited since 2010?
Yes.
Yes, we're in the process right now of revisiting it, so thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
Since I'm still learning more about the issue that the speaker's brought up tonight about the math intensive, I may be having a discussion with you at our agenda setting meeting about the possibility of putting that on.
Okay, other, future gen items?
No, I have a study session.
That would be a gen item.
That'd be a different format. Brownout.
Yes, actually I'm in the process of working with someone who will provide Brownout training for the entire board, we haven't had that in a number of years and I'll, I'll speak with the new board president. In the past, we've actually invited city council members, joint municipal agencies and I think that would be a good idea as a joint item with them. So I'll be talking with Mr. Rulick about that and sending out some dates for the entire board.
And that would be to save costs too, because you typically have a professional come in and do it?
Yes.
Like an attorney?
Correct.
So they could pay how?
One other thing.
Yes.
This isn't a next meeting sort of a thing, you have time to do this, but just putting it on the radar screen, would like to revisit the discussion on some sort of televised meeting and what, what the costs of that would be and practicalities.
Is that, I forgot to ask, on the Brownout, is that the rest of the board, I'm moving back a little bit, is that the will of the board?
Sure.
To have a training by nod if it's?
Even though we just came from CSBA, sure.
It's always good to have.
Yes.
Sure, and I hope it, it also educates some of our public that things as Brownout violations when there's not. Okay.
Is there the will of the board to bring back discussion about televised meetings?
Me personally?
Just.
I, I, fine, it's just the cost for me will, will be the issue. Okay?
And I'm hoping once we have our technology updates and all that stuff, we'll be able to do our own, yes, we'll be able to handle our own televised meetings, et cetera.
I mean, there's many issues to talk about, but it's worth the discussion.
Okay. Okay, and you wanted to say something on the math intensive program?
Yes, I have a, my fourth grader in the district, I don't know if anybody knows my, based on what my campaign I ran on, and I want to address the after-school programs in addition to the math intensive program. So I think that is crucial based on what I'm seeing with my son is experiencing with the homework and assistance.
And maybe when we bring that back, and I've had several conversations, we continue to outsource a lot of things like math intensive and, and talking to some of the younger teachers, they are looking, they are working two and three, four part-time jobs, you know, just to earn money. They may not be, wave your hands, member? But I know that there is probably an interest for some teachers to do it, maybe you don't have it, let's say there's somebody at Park Middle School, but there's no after-school opportunities to tutor, so maybe they go to a different school. I just think we could be a little creative and, you know, help art staff earn more money rather than consulting, consulting, consulting. So that would be part of the conversation that I would like to include.
Sure.
So, so perhaps if it's the will of the board, we start with a work study just on what we're currently doing in our after-school programs and kind of what funding, is that, is that the will of the board? I'm seeing heads nodding, Walter?
Okay. And then one more thing, at some point, I think I talked about restorative justice and how comprehensive it is. And so, you know, we have Mr. Davis from Dallas Ranch that comes here, he, I am restorative justice trained, so I do understand where he's coming from. And so I think that the more tools we can have in our district to build community, to help parents engage, we have to consider that. And he's come to quite a few of these board meetings talking about the restorative justice program and I don't want it to fall on deaf ears. So I'd encourage people to see it and of course, I am a proponent of using restorative justice throughout the district.
But is that a future agenda item?
It's something we have to think about because he's come in and he, he has spoken for it, so we, it doesn't have to be immediate, but I think it's something for the, for a future agenda item we should consider.
And I, I would welcome any board member who would like to actually go see a restorative process occurring, obviously with the participants' permission, just let me know and I'll work with school sites and, and so you can actually see it firsthand.
David's been a long time, I think.
Yes, he has.
Two, two and a half years ago, I suggested we do a work study.
Microphone.
A work study for restorative justice. So, yeah.
Yes, let's do it, I think so.
But as time permits, we've got, it sounds like we're already getting a lot of.
It's a future thing, but yeah, I think, I think in terms of school climate and culture, we have to consider where the, you know, where he's coming from, so anyway.
Great, thank you.
So these are, I'll work on these five items with Mr. Rulick calendaring them out so that we have an opportunity to really look at each one of them.
Thank you.
Okay, that's it for future agenda items, individuals stress the board regarding not items not on the agenda that we didn't have time for, that doesn't apply, we had plenty of time. Report from board members, reports related to memberships, other organizations or district business. I'll start to that end.
So I, I do just want to say that I have been to the math intensive program when I was at Deer Valley and I am aware and they had multi-age students in that math intensive program as well. I will make an attempt to go to Jack London and check it out. I do want to commend Mr. Jimino, I went to the concert at Park Middle, I, that was the one I was able to get to, it was standing room only, it was packed. And they're going to have another concert because of how many students are in the band and they have to split the concerts to two different times, so I think that's amazing and I do know that attendance and everything is up at Park, so that's also good, I'm excited about that. And if you all can go to the concert, I would encourage you to do so. And I think I'll limit it, what, that's it, I'll stop.
Mr. Hack?
Since I'm the new kid on the block, we'll talk to you next time.
Good. I didn't mean it snappy like that, but it's getting close to nine o'clock. Ms. Sawyer White?
I just want to say I'm excited to work with the board and I appreciate all the votes that I receive and I want our kids to get the best education possible.
Well, welcome. Mr. Rulick?
I'll also say nice things about Park Middle School, I mean, say nice things about every school, but just happened to be over there for a open house on their wellness program, the mindfulness, very impressive. Their suspensions are down, referrals are down, I believe 70%, suspensions 38%, I might have the figures vice versa. And remarkably, they've only lost one, one teacher. Normally they say it's about 12 to 15. So they think that the whole atmosphere of the school has changed. So we did some exercises there, it's basically kind of breathing things and seemed, seemed interesting. And we went over to the wellness room where they bring students over who are sort of beginning to act out, it's kind of trying to catch, nip it in the bud or, and they swear by it, so fascinating program to look at. And they've received, the nice thing about it too is they've received, it's all paid for by grants so far.
Which is great.
Much of us came back from California School Board Association Conference and thought it was very enriching.
It was, I learned a lot.
Okay, my turn, I'm going to take off my hat, put on my work hat. I've sent out a call to principals for Art for Schools, involves a $500 grant and a exhibit at the Lindhaus Gallery. Typically I do four, I had eight respondees and I've gotten the funds for the additional. I'm going to let them know. So I was very pleased with my board, my other board, Arts and Cultural Foundation for doing that, so we will figure that out, Dr. Clark. Lastly, it's been a pleasure being president for you. As you know, my goal is to do our business quickly, efficiently and without a lot of comments. So with that, I will just tell you our next board meeting dates are December 14th, no, today's the 14th, the 25th and whatever day comes after that, put it up on the board. January 25th, no, and February 15th.
Oh, is that, I can't remember. Special board meeting, I think is what they.
Yes, so with that, is there?
Chris has something.
I have one thing, an oversight of mine, when we were talking about facilities, I really meant to introduce Sajid Mahiv, who has started with the district two weeks ago, so.
Our facilities manager?
My oversight.
Welcome, welcome.
And, and I, and I missed the opportunity to truly thank Mr. Learned for coming very, during what was kind of a rocky time and just really running with it and looking at some practices that we had in place for a number of years that needed some tweaking or we needed to stop doing. I mean, you have a really critical eye, it's been such a pleasure working with you and I've really enjoyed just how straightforward you are. I, I appreciate that in people, you, you just kind of cut to the chase and, and it's really refreshing and, and so it's been a pleasure and I'm, just thank you so much.
Thank you.
Are we really not going to see you again?
Probably not at the board meeting.
Okay.
I was hoping to be at the board meeting for the 25th to help Teresa, but I've made plans to go soon.
Okay.
People who think they're retired, gosh.
I do, I'd like to thank you for a stand-up job and a real pleasure having you and would like to commend Diane for her tenure, it was a heck of a year.
Yes, it was.
Among other things, losing not one but two board members to moving out of the area, that's, that's really something.
And I would like to add my thank yous, as you know, I don't trust well. Trust is not my forte, but thank you. Trust is not my forte, but thank you. I feel that we finally have gotten our budget where we can talk to the public and our employees and we're honest and above board. Not that we weren't in the past, but you have to know your numbers, be on top of your numbers to have those conversations. And thank you so much for that, and even for your surrey ceiling.
And I, I have to say that there was challenges, but I really appreciated working with this board, the previous board, the community, and especially Stephanie and all the staff of Antioch Unified. They've been terrific.
Yes, we'll miss you. So with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
No. Actually, before, I'd like to thank Chris, and we have to go into closed session, yeah, and just.
That's right.
Really appreciate Chris for his patience with all the budget questions, and Mia, and yet the other staff, for everything you've done. I know it was tumultuous when you came on, and your patience and insight really helped us to understand what was happening with the budget, and I really appreciate that. And then I also want to appreciate Jessica and Stephanie, because prior to Chris coming on, you guys worked pretty hard in what we term scrubbing the budget. There was a lot of work going on to, to fix everything so that we could, you know, keep things afloat and understand. So I really appreciate all the staff, and thank you to everyone. I, I just want to say, Chris, I'll be in touch, of course. I'll need your cell.
Thank you.
Anyway, thank you.
We will go into closed session, then we will adjourn shortly after. I'm not going to meet my nine o'clock goal.